To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes, April twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Yulikamp.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Knoski. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Words and proclamations, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. And I, I will read that. Okay, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable source giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Devil's Lake has been recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices. Now therefore, I, Jim Mo, Mayor of the City of Devil's Lake, do hereby proclaim May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five as Arbor Day in the City of Devil's Lake, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations dated this five, fifth day of May, twenty twenty-five. And do we have a motion to approve that?
So.
Second.
Yeah, well, motion by Commissioner Yulikamp. And Commissioner Hatch, second. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is a public hearing, change in zoning for pine meadows. I, there's nobody here to talk about it, but we're looking, it was denied by the planning committee, and we're looking for a motion to table it.
Right, so in, on this one specifically, there were two different meetings that the planning commission held, there was no action taken by the planning commission, and after that, the applicants withdrawn their application. So there is no application for consideration, also, there's no action required.
Okay.
On that, that specific here.
Perfect, okay, so just drop it then.
Yep.
Okay. Item number two is change in zoning, somebody, Avotment four-four-zero-zero-four-five. Rob, you want to?
And this is just a, a simple, uh, request for zoning change from agricultural to residential suburban. It's for a single-family home to be built on a lot of northwest of town, recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Hatch?
I'll second the other.
Commissioner Knoski. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, now it's time for bid openings at five-thirty, the first item is for twenty twenty-five curb, gutter, and sidewalk, Spencer.
Yeah, paramo, we have two bids, first bid is from Lakeview Construction. Check is included. Liability insurance. Secretary of State's contractor's license. Bid from Lakeview Construction, total bid is fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Bid is fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Second bid for twenty twenty-five curb, gutter, and sidewalk, Elsack Septic Back. Secretary of State's license, contractor's license is included, as well as, uh, necessary check. Bid sixty thousand, one-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. Again, bid sixty thousand, one-hundred-and-fourteen dollars.
Which is the commission?
We need to.
Recommend?
Recommend.
Yep.
The plan for us will be, we'll put together a bid tabulation, because there's some math that goes into it, there's different bid items, make sure that there isn't any math errors, and then, uh, put together a recommendation for the commission at the next meeting.
Make a motion to, uh, hand it over to the engineer for consideration.
Commissioner Knoski? Commissioner Yulikamp. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next item is twenty twenty-five street repair.
Bid for twenty twenty-five asphalt and concrete street repair, um, one bid from Tri-State Paving and Concrete Incorporated. Two percent bid bond is included. Contractors license and insurance, proof of insurance is included. Bid from Tri-State Paving and Concrete Incorporated, one hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. One hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion to hand it over to engineering for consideration.
Commissioner Knoski? Commissioner Yulikamp, no kidding? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item three is the automated refuse truck.
We have one bid for this, submitted by Sanitation Products. Direct purchase price bid, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars. Four hundred and twenty-nine, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars.
It's cheaper than a fire truck.
Not much.
We'll make a motion to hand it over to, would you want to send it to Corey, or?
To Mike.
To Mike.
Mike?
For consideration.
Okay.
We have a committee that'll review it, it's a, a request for proposal type bid, so there's not, there's more than just the price that's included, it's meeting the specifications, it's service, it's location, it's, uh, different items that are included in the package.
Do you know this company?
Oh, yeah, they've been around a long time.
They do most of the work for, for sanitation.
So most of it, Commissioner Knoski?
My second.
Commissioner Hatch? Any further discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. That's it. Move on, visitors and delegations, today we have Brandon Padilla here to give us an update with the Devil's Lake Rodeo Club, so please come forward and identify yourself for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Brandon Padilla, I'm the president of Devil's Lake Rodeo Club. I guess we're here once again to kind of give you an update on, on the lookings for the rodeos, uh, how everything's coming along. We did officially agree there, uh, we haven't signed an agreement yet, but we verbally committed to the Ramsey County Fair Board that, um, we are going to be moving out to the Ramsey County Event Center this year. So that's just when we kind of thought we were done learning about our building, like, we're going to start over, but it'll be good. The seating capacity on that's about roughly two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty more, uh, available seating for spectators. The nice thing out there is, I know, we don't have to try and keep people off the grass, we don't have to worry about, uh, making the school mad and having horses where they shouldn't be. Parking out there is probably going to be the biggest thing, but there's enough room, I think we'll be able to get everybody in.
Hope no rain shows up.
There's, supposedly they're, um, talking with them, they're working on turning a lot of that into gravel. So that they don't have to worry about that, and not just for the rodeo, but for all their other events they plan on hosting out there, there's going to be a lot of big trip, big vehicles out there, so the least amount of damage they can do, they, they want to try and stop that, so that'll be good. Some other updates, we've been working for the last couple of years to, um, have a video board or a replay screen at the rodeo. We just, with logistics at the verdict, we couldn't, we couldn't make that feasible. But we are working with a company now that's, we're going to rent a, let's see, it's a eleven-by-twenty video replay board. Then it's a company that does all the major rodeos across the nation, so it's, they, they know what they're doing when they're coming. That's a big expense, but I think it's something that's going to add to the entertainment value of the rodeo. You know, be able to do the look-alike stuff, have replays of the rides, uh, scoreboards, uh, kiss cams, whatever you can do on a big screen, we'll be able to do there with a, with a very professional company, so we're looking forward to that as well. And then I guess, we're also, I guess we're not here to ask for money, we're just kind of giving an update and seeing what the commission's wishes are for us. Just some, I guess another update, we did add, um, we've added more to our prize purse. Last year, we were right around twenty-seven thousand dollars in added prize money, um, which drew about four-hundred-and-fifty contestants to town for the course of three days. Uh, we did talk to Suzie at the chamber, and she figured our economic impact somewhere around that one-point-five to one-point-six million-dollar range over the course of three days. With the added, we're adding more money this year, we're going to be somewhere in the mid thirty-thousand-dollar for added prize money. I think we're gonna, we're gonna see more than five-hundred contestants this year, just in what I've been hearing on the backside from the rodeo community.
Exciting to get that new facility, the, are they excited about that?
Yeah, extremely, they're really excited for it, you know? We had some, we had some worries, but they've actually brought us in on some of their planning, which helps us to use some of the worries to make sure everything's gonna work for everybody, I guess if you will, making sure there's water and power and everything where it needs to be, so, yeah, I know, we're, we're definitely looking forward to the opportunity, and the biggest thing is I'm looking forward to not having to clean up dirt for two days.
Are they almost done, are they out there?
Uh, the last I heard, they're shooting for beginning to mid-June, uh, total completion date.
Do they have a grand opening of some sort, or?
I believe so, but I couldn't give you, I believe they do have a grand opening date set, I don't know what that is, I guess, um, I think they're having a steak fry or something, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think there was an invite coming up about grand opening.
I think it's the first part of June sometime is when they're going to do the, the ribbon cutting. Yeah. But yeah, no, it's going to be, it's going to be fun, just a little more learning to do again, but it'll be all right.
Well, you've done a great job, I mean, you came from zero to a hundred, right?
Yeah, um, you know, I, I agree with you, when we started this back in two thousand twenty-one, I think it is, um, I honestly didn't think that we were going to have a rodeo the first year we tried. I didn't, didn't know that it was going to be there to be able to do it, but with the support of the community, uh, the City of Devil's Lake, and a bunch of sponsors, uh, we were able to hit the ground running, and now it's turned into a, almost a second full-time unpaid job for me.
It's like your first job.
There's a few that know how to run that.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
That's wonderful.
As of right now, no, it's going to be in town. Part of our thinking on that is, moving out of town, um, we thought we'd have any extra activities in town to bring, so we can keep the spending in town. We don't want them to go set up camp out there for three days and never come to town, because that doesn't look good for our sponsors.
Thoughtful, thank, appreciate that.
Yep.
And, and they will spend money, you know, that's the nice thing.
Yeah, yeah, you know, uh, when then usually, this, usually at the end of the year, uh, we pick a couple nonprofit groups to donate money back to. In the past, we've done the TLC Animal Rescue, um, 4H, and can't remember who else, but we've done a couple donation things like that. And this year, being at a new building, having the big screen, kind of making a big event, we're going to wait to donate money till we're at the event, so we can bring them out into the arena, present them with a big check, um, kind of, kind of make a show out of it, so.
But it's good too to, you know, put yourselves out there and show that you're giving back, you know, people don't know that.
Right, um, we've been, we put it in the newspaper before, but, uh, we're not in it for the, we're not in it for the thanks to give the money back, it's just our way of, kind of our mission stated that, you know, we're in it for the, um, to keep the Western heritage alive and going and helping people that help animals, so. Um, and we've also donated money to the Boys' Girl Scouts, the Dance Booster, the Football Booster, they help clean bleachers, last year I think we had twelve or thirteen football players that came and tore all the panels down, that was the fastest I've ever seen the panels tore down, we had it done in like thirty-five minutes, and usually that was a three-to-four hour process, so.
Any more questions? Thank you for what you do for the community on that.
Um, I would suspect we'll be back in June to talk about.
The finances?
So, all right, we appreciate it, thank you guys.
Thank you, Brandon. We will go Commissioner Portfolios, and then start with Commissioner Knoski.
Mike, water sewer?
Um, giving a little tour out at the, uh, Lemna, uh, system, lagoon system tomorrow as part of the North Dakota Rural Water Systems Association training, they have training over at the courthouse, and part of the training modules will be a wastewater treatment, uh, tour out at our lagoon and Lemna system. So, uh, they're working there, they got, uh, quite a few things going on, the utilities department kind of helps with our docks for the end cap fishing piers, and they're working on them, and hopefully we'll get most of them in this week. That's why I have for utilities, Commissioner.
You have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hatch?
Anything from engineering?
Um, as far as the automated, uh, truck, uh, as part of that process, we have to have a special meeting, we're going to have a special meeting May thirteenth, uh, at city offices here from four to six that day, we have to have a special meeting, uh, it's going to be an open house format, so the general public can come in and talk a little bit about the automated, uh, system that we're looking at, and gather some input with that as part of our USDA grant loan submission requirements, they require a, a public input meeting. And so, uh, May thirteenth, uh, up at the city office here, if anybody's interested in that. The only other thing that I have is that, uh, right now, based on current conditions, we're looking at going to the alleys, uh, for garbage pickup starting next week. Special pickup continues, that's all I have, Commissioner, unless you have questions.
Anything else from engineering, other than?
Everything, uh, is in the, uh, memo packet, other than everybody sees the work that's occurring on College Drive, that's part of the work, uh, that we have going on this summer. The traffic control that you currently see set up is for the, uh, electrical contractor to perform work for traffic signals, uh, school zones, and things of that nature, so that's why you see kind of some of the intermittent, uh, traffic control, that, uh, move the lanes in a little bit, just to give the contractor room to work in order to complete the, uh, electrical traffic signal portion of that project.
Perfect. I have nothing else.
We have Rob?
Oh, Rob. Let's go, Rob.
And the only thing I've got is, uh, just wanted to give an update, so eleven-seventy-six, what, you know, the session's ended now, eleven-seventy-six was the property tax reform and, and, uh, uh, the bill that they passed through, and just wanted to touch on a couple of the key components from that bill. Uh, the first is that there, uh, throughout the whole session, uh, it's the homestead property tax credit, they're going to increase the income thresholds from forty, seventy thousand, fifty and eighty thousand, that got pulled at the last minute, so that'll stay where it was at forty and seventy thousand dollars for the income thresholds. Uh, the disabled vets credit, uh, they did increase the value, the taxable value that that, that's applied to that, so currently the disabled vets credit is only good for, uh, the first hundred and eighty thousand dollars on a property, they brought that up to two-hundred thousand dollars of worth of property now, which brings it in line with what the homestead credit is. Uh, so the, those who are on disabled vets credits will see an increase in the, in the cover, the amount of credit they get if their, the value of their home is over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, the primary residence credit, which is the big one, that's the five, one that was five hundred dollars, that will be one thousand, six hundred dollars.
It won't be the five hundred and the sixty?
No, no, it'll be the five hundred turned into sixty.
You could only be so lucky, right?
Right, right, so, but it's sixteen hundred dollars.
That's still.
Uh, there, there was some talk as far as a, a skin in the game amendment, where there is only going to cover up to seventy-five percent of your taxes, that was pulled out, uh, so as long, it'll cover your taxes up to sixteen hundred dollars without any sort of caps or, or limits there. And, uh, one of the things that's really going to impact my office is, you know, we have those notices of increases that we send out for our board of equalization each year, no longer doing that, we have to send out a valuation notice for every property, so we'll be mailing out over three thousand notices next year. So budget season's coming up, I'll make sure I talk with Spencer, and making sure we have that in our budget, uh, for all that postage.
That's going to add up, how about generating that letter and getting that ready, that's going to be.
There, there's going to be a time element to it, you know, so it's, the, the, getting the envelopes, everything prepared, fortunately, we've got some hardware to help out with some of that, uh, but yeah, it's going to be over two thousand dollars in, in, just in.
Postage.
So, uh, the, the only other thing is, uh, and I don't know all the details on it, because there's some nuances in it, but the three percent cap on the property valuation, or the property, uh, tax levies that can be levied by, uh, uh, political subs, that is in effect now, uh, and so there are some nuances as far as how that gets applies to some of the schools, and some of the other political subdivisions, uh, but again, I'm not that detailed for that portion, but that three percent cap is now over there.
And so that goes back retroactive from January now, so this, this whole year is that sixteen hundred for everybody.
Yeah, so that, and, and you had to have applied for it by March thirty-first, so at this point, you're, you're, if you didn't apply for it, you won't get it for this year.
Oh.
And then each year moving forward, you're still going to have to apply for it.
Do you think everybody applied, that, you know?
Well, it's, we, we pushed it out, but there are going to be people, there are going to be people who missed it.
Wow, hope they didn't, that's.
But that, you know, it's something that they're going to have to watch for every year moving forward now, because it does require.
You still have to fly for it no matter what.
Yes, yep. But that's what I've got, unless you have any other questions?
Nothing else.
That's good news.
Yeah, it's really good news.
Makes no idea, is that? Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Yulikamp?
Mike, Streets?
Street crews will be out doing some crack sealing, uh, getting the crack sealing complete, they've already been out doing some, they'll still be out. Crack sealing, uh, the majority of the crack sealing that they'll be completing will be in areas that we're looking to chip seal this year, making sure that we seal up the cracks before we do the chip seal, just ask, uh, city residents to be patient, and if you see work going on, if you can avoid that area, avoid that area. You know, we, we do use a sealant that goes down, and once that's, uh, down, we try and cool it so that it doesn't track, but if you see black, stay away until, uh, things are, uh, our crews are able to get out of that area. So that's one thing with streets, the other thing, uh, I would bring up with, uh, streets, uh, is mosquitoes, you may see, uh, some dog kennel-looking things that are, uh, around town, we purchased four more mosquito traps, uh, the mosquito traps that we purchased are a little more advanced in technology, actually count the mosquito that it traps in the trap, and it'll be able to, uh, count the mosquitoes that are being trapped with time of day. So it gives a little more technology to, uh, our mosquito program, and the idea there is if we can track when the mosquitoes are getting trapped, that's when they're active. And if we find out when they're most active, then we can be out ground spraying at the right time.
I had one in my pickup the other day, I wanted to call and have sprayed on.
And there will always be people like that out there too, right? One bite is too many. So, w- we're trying to improve that, and so when you see those, uh, kennels, uh, so now we'll have the four newer traps, and then we have, still have the four, four older traps, that we physically, uh, count the mosquitoes, so we, just trying to improve, uh, what we have going on there. Crews were out, uh, and put out some of the dunks, so one of the things that we do as far as the mosquito control is put the dunks in standing water areas, and trying to prevent the mosquito from hatching in the first place, growing into an adult mosquito. So, uh, that work is going, and hopefully it'll be a year of no mosquitoes, but.
Yeah, we have, how many airlines or air flights, possibly just two? Kind of set aside possibly?
That's what we budget for, we budget for two typically, one around the Fourth of July, one around, uh, Labor Day, and then we have three ground units, you know, it wasn't many years ago where we only had one, and it's hard to cover the entire ground at that prime time, only one unit, so now we have the three that were, uh, able to get out there. That's why I have for Streets question, unless you have questions, there's other things, uh, written up as far as engineering and recommendations, project award.
Anything with the cemetery?
Getting ready for Memorial Day.
Yep.
Good, okay, Commissioner Pierce's portfolio, Corey?
Well, I was asked to bring up the, so we're going to post our opening for a firefighter, Nate's, uh, working on that, I think he's going to post it this week sometime, hopefully tomorrow or Wednesday. Fill the boot, at the end of the month, we're doing that again.
Okay.
On the thirtieth, I believe, the Friday of the.
Devil's Run? I, looking for some volunteers, are you?
Always.
Okay.
Yeah, you're looking for something to do, you know, yeah, we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay, all right.
I think we're just doing Friday, just Friday, it's hard to find people that want to give up their, all that time, so.
How many spots do you set up at?
What was that?
How many spots do you go set up in, in town?
Uh, I believe, I can't tell you, I thought we were talking about just doing one this year.
Really?
Depending on how many people we get.
Yeah.
We get enough people, we'll do the Leaver's Corner and Walmart, but if we just, we'll just do one if we don't get enough people. And then on Wednesday, I believe, unless the weather changes, or there's a big burn van, we're going to be burning some greens ditches for, like, um, out on Elk's Drive, so you guys get any calls on that stuff, we're going to try to burn those cattails and things on Wednesday, that's the plan, now, if there's a burn van, we'll, we'll do that, because, you know, have a look back.
Oh, we're good. Who says, yeah?
Lucky you're fired. Yeah, we're gonna, that's the plan as of right now, but those plans can always change.
And you're going to talk about the Arbor Day?
Well, yeah, okay, I'm going to do, uh.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's okay, uh, Arbor Day is Friday, May sixteenth, at one PM at Mini H School, so you all get your, should all be getting an invitation. Welcome to come over there, we are going to have a shade meeting before that, we're going to discuss our, uh, hopefully we get some bids for trimming and things like that, we'll recommend that the next meeting for you guys. And then, uh, Tree City, we were awarded the Tree City USA again, this is the forty-fifth year that we've been awarded that, so, um, there's some, uh, stipulations, they have to have a tree board, and you have to have a proclamation, you spend a certain amount of money, so, you know, kudos to the city, and the city fathers for doing that for. doing that for a forty-five years, making sure that gets done, so, appreciate that. That's all I got, unless you have questions.
You guys still gonna have like those coupons for trees that you can get?
Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna have some of those. We're also, hopefully by the end of the summer, in the middle of the summer, we're gonna have a, a plan moving forward for a five-year plan for shade tree, or strategic plan period, you know? To help with this upcoming annual dashboard, if, when and if it becomes an issue, so, just be patient, we've already made some people angry by cutting a few trees down, but that's gonna happen in the process. Can't make everybody happy all the time, you know? But what we cut down, we'd like to replace too, so. And I know, best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago, or today, but, you know? So hopefully we can get some, some money, I'd like to apply for grant for some money, things of that nature, so.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
Mayor, with Sergeant Graywater and Officer Brock here currently in Grant Forks for intensive tactics training, that's done throughout Dushill, tactical, so they'll come back and train the rest of our officers. Detective Sergeant Rodriguez, Detective Sushwab Nasser O'Shea, they're at the Women in Law Enforcement Summit in Faribault, and that goes today and tomorrow. And Corporal Gilperson will be attending Division Zero Conference, and that'll be in Bismarck, that's Wednesday and Thursday. I've got three, any questions?
Anybody got questions from Chief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Spencer?
Mayor Mo, members of the commission, in the staff report, you'll see, I just laid out a kind of a timeline for the special election that was approved by resolution at the last meeting for July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Reviewed and consulted with the city attorney real quick on the dates, and just kind of made sure everything was in good order, trying to follow North Dakota entry code as, as close as we can here, make sure we're compliant, and so I kind of listed all the dates that we're gonna request action or get things accomplished by. One note would be the next meeting, we're gonna request that you guys approve the ballot language for the special election, as well as designate polling location at the memorial building. Did tentatively reserve the memorial building in advance, and I did have a conversation with Callie Underwood over there. She confirmed that we, that the room is reserved and we are good to go. So, feel pretty confident about that. We'll have you guys approve that at the next meeting. And then, as far as public engagement goes, Mayor spoke with you on Friday, just to confirm things up, and our plan is to kind of release some one-page short educational materials via the internet and the newspaper of the week of June ninth to June thirteenth, that week there. We make sure to be very educational and of those sorts of things. And anybody that's looking to get information in advance of that, all the staff reports, pages and pages and pages have already been presented to you guys publicly available, as well as the presentations themselves. So, we're gonna start there. And then as far as open houses, in talking with the team, felt that, you know, most people start paying attention closer to the referendum date, and that to have two open houses, July eighth and July tenth, that's a Tuesday and a Thursday, two weeks before the referendum, would hold a kind of an open house format, we'd have some static displays, give a short presentation, Mayor Commissioners be present, and then maybe, probably wouldn't be a lot of, a whole lot of people projected, you know, if we have it twice, two days a week, but if commissioners are there, you guys will be able to have some really good one-on-one interactions with some citizens that have questions, so. That's the, the current kind of tentative timeline, and would welcome any feedback from you guys if you would like to see any change.
Certainly looks okay with me.
So far so good, yeah.
And I do agree that the more commissioners that could be there, that, and the open houses would be vital to success. I think that's important. You know, they like to hear from us on different one-on-one occasions, and why each one of us support it, or whatever, you know?
Correct. So that's what we have there, and I had attached that. And then I have just a couple of quick things. Budget season is gonna be coming upon us, so between now and the next meeting, I'm gonna send out the budget request forms to Department of, get that ball rolling a little bit.
So we're in effect, we can't raise three, more than three percent of our budget now, right?
So, yes, but we're gonna have to consult with the League of Cities, the states, Robin Araby, how to factor in what they call new growth, 'cause you know, you can have new growth plus the three percent.
Yeah.
And so, what's defined as new growth? You know, if we had an empty lot and the house is built, you could, how does that work out exactly? So, wanna make sure that we, we do that right the first time. And I'm sure, like with anything, they've passed a big, complicated sweeping bill that's gonna provide a lot of relief to North Dakotans, and there's some strings attached with it for us localities. I'm sure that there's gonna be some things that need to be ironed out next session, more specifics, all that sort of stuff, so. This'll be the first try around, the first two, two years, and then I'm sure they're gonna go back and refine things, so. We're gonna do the best we can these next two years in that regard. And with the budget, thinking if it's, if the commission's good with it, you know, 'cause with the referendum occurring, the special election on July twenty-second, to maybe have some of those, some of those budget conversations in late June, can really kind of get deep in, in the weeds as to how our, our general fund is structured, and why the public safety portion of that sales tax is really important, as well as the public buildings piece of it. And so, and, and how the water source replacement fund could be backfilled to provide that utility relief, really. And so we could, could start that process a little earlier, if you guys welcome that. We could just have a, a piece in the meeting agendas of the normal meeting, special ones, where we could block off a little time for that type of stuff, something that we, we would propose to you guys. If you don't have any objections, we'll, we'll plan to do that.
No, makes sense.
Yep.
And then, I was gonna talk about Senate Bill twenty twelve made, or twenty twelve made a few changes to Prairie Dog, they moved the buckets around a little bit, but they took part of the, part of the Prairie Dog bucket, and they put in the SIP fund for, for distributions, and then they moved half the money over to the DOT budget, where they can be applied for grants now. Mayor Mo, we spoke with the delegation on the importance of Prairie Dog, and how we like the distribution, everything, and Senator Weston provided a very thoughtful phone call and, and explained in detail what they were looking at, and the pros and the cons, and it was a thoughtful conversation, it was good, I appreciate that he called and.
Representative Fraley got back to me too.
Okay, great. So that was, well, we'll, what I think I'm gonna do is, the legal, 'cause the session just ended on Friday, the legal send out some information on, on summaries, everything that happened, and we'll get in partnership with the city attorney to see if there's any ordinances that need to be updated because of legislation that was passed, and we'll give you a, a presentation on all the things that passed that will impact the city.
So are you, are you seeing that the Prairie Dog money is gonna be reduced, or is that gonna, I mean, what's the?
It's gonna be a little more complicated to get it, we're gonna have to fly for it. It, you know, before it was like, we, they just handed it out.
Give you a chunk of money, right?
Each, based on your size.
Half of it, half of it will be distributed, distributed directly to us, and then the other half they put in a bucket to apply for grants. And Mayor had just articulated to the delegation that we like the distribution. But there was also talks about, you know, Senator Weston was, you know, brought up a good point, that, you know, they're projecting oil to be down, so this by any, and there's a high probability that those buckets wouldn't fill, and we wouldn't see anything. When they move them up into the process, and into, into that strategic investments fund, there's a higher likelihood that we could see something.
Right.
So, it's a give and take with it. And so, I probably.
Just wanna give the history of what we did with the money, and how beneficial it's been for us for the past ten, fifteen years, I mean, however many. It's been huge.
You have to be accountable for that money, don't you?
Yeah, you have to send a report in every two years, and obviously we get audited at it, so. So we'll give you an update on North Dakota side of stuff impacting city doubles, like at a future meeting, when more resources are available. Other than that, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
We have seven proposed ordinances on the agenda for this evening, they're all just the first reading, they all deal with nuisance. I'll give you the detail on them.
Okay. Okay, and do we have to do anything with these award of bids? Okay.
Yes, please.
We'll go to, number one item is engineering recommend award a bid on project two fifty one oh one.
Through the Department of Transportation, bid opening process, bids were open for our Fourteenth Street Northeast and Fourteenth Avenue Northeast project, that's commonly referred to as the Midco Road, is Fourteenth Street Northeast. A little bid was submitted by Central Specialties out of Alexandria, Minnesota, amount of five hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. That project is on our federal aid system, so we're able to access eighty percent funding to help cover eighty percent of the construction cost for that. So, commission asks to award the contract to Central Specialties in the amount of five forty-eight, eight sixty-seven, ninety-nine. Recommend with that, going ahead with that award.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve project two five zero one.
Commissioner Hatch?
Seconded.
Commissioner Knosky. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Knosky?
Aye.
Commissioner Hatch?
Aye.
Commissioner Eulencamp?
Aye.
President.
Aye, motion carried. Second item is engineering recommend award a bid for project two five zero one oh two.
Based on review of the bids, recommend city commission award the project to Stratik Corporation in the amount of one million, twenty-one thousand, ninety-eight dollars and ten cents.
I'll make a motion to, uh, award the contract to Stratik Corporation.
Commissioner Knosky?
Second.
Commissioner Eulencamp? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Knosky?
Aye.
Commissioner Hatch?
Aye.
Commissioner Eulencamp?
Aye.
President.
Aye, motion carried. Item three, engineering recommendation award a bid for project two five zero one oh three.
That's for the city's, by the two minutes seal coat project. Recommend city commission award the project to Asphalt Preservation Company Incorporated of Duluth, Minnesota, in the amount of four hundred six thousand, nine hundred ten dollars and twenty-six cents.
Make a motion to approve project twenty five oh one oh three.
Commissioner Eulencamp?
I'll second.
Commissioner Hatch? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Knosky?
Aye.
Commissioner Hatch?
Aye.
Commissioner Eulencamp?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. And item four, engineering recommendation of award a bid for project two five zero one oh four.
Out of the projects that we're working on this summer, some of the downtown alley projects are gonna be the most challenging, because where do you start, where do you stop? What are you touching, what don't you touch? There's a lot of interesting work that has occurred in those alleys. That being said, recommend city commission award the project to Stratik Corporation in the amount of two hundred ninety-two thousand, fifty dollars and thirty-five cents.
Make a motion to approve the contract to Stratik Corporation.
Commissioner Knosky?
Second.
Commissioner Hatch? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Knosky?
Aye.
Commissioner Hatch?
Aye.
Commissioner Eulencamp?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Nothing under old business, consent agenda, nothing. New business, we have reappointments on the Board of Judgment. Oh, okay. You printed it out, right? Okay, we have an appointment, reappointment of Chris Wald as a born member. His expiring term is June thirtieth, and Richard Jerkensen has an alternate member with his term expiring June thirtieth.
Make a motion to reappoint those members to the board.
Yep. Commissioner Knosky?
I'll second.
Commissioner Hatch? Any further discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, same sign? Motion carried, okay. The next one is reappointments to Shade Tree.
Mayor Mo, members of the commission, you guys did approve reappointments at the last meeting. And administrative mayor, on my part, I attached the memo to the, to this staff report, so you guys reappointed Terry Wallace and Sarah Lady to terms they've already been appointed to. So, request is to do it right this time.
Okay, the Devil's Lake Shade Tree Committee took action at their October tenth meeting to recommend to appoint Dick Olson and Torn Moes as members of the Shade Tree Committee. Their terms will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. A little motion by Commissioner Eulencamp?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hatch. Any discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, same sign? Thank you. An agreement with the Lake Region Corporation Recycling Service. Spencer?
Mayor Mo, as a member of the commission, if you recall the conversation we had at the last meeting regarding curbside recycling services, and with the current supervisor Rodney looking to retire this summer, the capital investment that would need to be made by Lake Region Corp. with the purchase of that new vehicle, our sanitation trucks at four twenty-five, four hundred twenty-five thousand, the recycling truck would probably be right up there as well, and evidence of, of no market for the recyclable goods, to transition away from the curbside recycling program, but maintain our partnership with Lake Region Corp. and, as well as drop-off service out at the recycling center. The agreement reflects the conversation that we had in the presentation at the last meeting, removes all the references to the curbside recycling service delivery, and specifies the processing, sorting and bailing of the recyclable goods. As far as the compensation, what we, what we wanted to get to is, they're going to employ, work to employ, you know, three people up to a myriad of hours, however, we don't know exactly how long the bailing is going to take, given, you know, if you stop the curbside, how many people are gonna continue bringing things up to the site, how long is the bailing gonna take? And so, what we have here is fifty thousand dollars prorated per month. What we would like to do is, we would like to get together with them in October and reevaluate how, how many hours, 'cause they're gonna be tabulating the hours their employees are working, Corey will have a sense of how many, how much time and, and volume of recyclables are being bailed, and then we can reevaluate in advance of next year and, and perform a renewed agreement with a different dollar amount, if we feel it needs to be changed. And so, fifty thousand prorated monthly.
Monthly or annually?
Well, it's fifty thousand, like if it was fifty thousand dollars a year, how much would it be each month? So it's, every month, we're gonna pay them.
But it's an annual fee.
Gotcha.
I got you.
So. And then again, we'll reevaluate in advance of November one, hopefully have something in November, if we need to put something else before you guys. At least at a minimum, we'll give you an update as to how it's going.
So it's effective January one?
So this, this agreement's effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
So no, no curbside at that point.
That would be the date that we would seize operations on the curbside.
What am I gonna do with those pink crates?
Collect others.
Commissioner, if you would like to keep them, I think we could work out a deal.
Appreciate that, Mike.
Or something else.
Yeah, is there a drop-off point for those that want to return them?
Right now, our plan is that our crews would be following up when we do the last curbside.
I'll just pick them up.
In conjunction with them, when Lake Region Corporation dumps the crates, we will take the crates, and that's kind of what the current plan is. There might be some people, I don't know what we're gonna do with all the crates. If a city resident who's had that crate for the last fifteen years wants to keep that crate, that might be in the guards, 'cause I don't know that we have a full.
They'll probably pull it from you, the ones that want it.
Ice fishing and carrying propane tanks and buckets and things, so they don't tip over, so that might be repurposed.
Yeah.
It would be ideal if they get recycled as well, into some other useful purpose.
Once we do establish kind of a steady norm, the increase per year in the contract is three percent. Three percent per year. Once we, once it gets to where we can reach that new normal.
So we need a motion to prove that?
To approve the agreement, please. With an effective, just reiterate, an effective date of July one, twenty twenty-five, so we'll still have curbside recycling tomorrow, but July one will.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the city and Lake Region Corporation.
Commissioner Knosky.
Second.
Commissioner Eulencamp. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Knosky.
Aye.
Commissioner Hatch.
Aye.
Mr. Eulencamp.
Aye.
President.
Aye. Okay, now we deal with the ordinance, and, and basically we just have to talk about it, we don't have no action necessary, right?
That's correct, there's no action necessary. If I may, all, all those listed sequentially, I, I think what would be best is to, if I kind of jump around a little, I think it would make more sense because. Kind of what's going on is just reordering of what's already enacted as ordinances. So start with the first proposed ordinance, one zero one two definitions. All we're doing here is taking the definition of blighted structure and picking it up out of that section and moving it to a different space. And the reason is, this chapter eight point zero eight has to do with junk property, junk automobiles. So you wouldn't really logically go there to find the definition of blighted structure. So we're moving that one definition down to what is proposed ordinance number one zero one seven, definition of blighted structure. So it's just reordering, moving it to a different spot. Very similar thing is happening with the next proposed ordinance, one zero one three, maintenance of blighted structure are awful. That's the ordinance that says you cannot maintain a blighted structure, it's unlawful to do so. Again, right now, it's in that junk, junk automobile part of municipal code, picking it up, moving it to a different. Chapter, which is chapter eight point three two, and it shows up as the last ordinance on your list, number one zero one eight. So again, not changing law, we're just kind of copying and pasting, rather cut and paste, moving it to a different part. The, the goal here is to, again, have chapter eight point three two be. Everything that has to do with blighted structures and substandard structures, so people know they look to that chapter. And actually, that's where ordinance number, proposed ordinance number one zero one six. The only thing we're doing there is changing the title. The title is not really an ordinance, it's just there to, you know, be helpful. People look and see the title of a section, it's, it's not really a law itself, but in any event. Right now, chapter eight point three two says, substandard buildings or structures. If the commission approves this particular proposed ordinance, it'll be changed to blighted or substandard buildings or structures. Blighted is, it's, it's bad to the point where it's not habitable. Substandard is to the point where it's dangerous, okay? But we want to keep all of that in one area, it's chapter eight point three two. So right there is five of the seven ordinances. The other two, the first one is proposed ordinance number one zero one four, removal by police department. This is if it gets to the point where the police department or, or some other agency has to remove trash or garbage or something else. You can. Right now, the ordinance gives a notice requirement. You could post something on the door, give them personal service that says, you have two days to get this stuff removed or we will do it for you. But for some reason, it puts a cap on the end. That says no less than two days, but no more than thirty. Well, I, I don't see how there's such a thing as too much notice. So there's really no reason for that, no, you know, more than thirty-day portion. Really what it does is it locks the police department or fire department, whoever it might be, into a window where they have to get it done within that time period. So within that proposed ordinance, one zero one four, it's just removing that no more than thirty-day language, everything else is the same. The last proposed ordinance, ordinance number one zero one five, it's titled sanitation requirements. We're doing, this, this has to do with unlawful dumping. So someone goes to the recycling center and they, they throw a mattress out there, and Chief Toso can, can tell you a lot of other things that have happened. Where people just are dumping what they shouldn't. As it currently reads, that ordinance provides a monetary penalty, I think it's a five hundred dollar fine. What we're doing is revising just the penalty clause to say what we've said in the other nuisance ordinances that have come before the commission you've approved of. Where it goes to an infraction, if it's the first offense, and if we have that habitual offender within that certain period of time. Then it can be bumped up to a class B misdemeanor. And that's really all that's changing, getting the, the penalty clause in line with everything else that we've done. Hopefully this will be. Again, if this, if the commission agrees with what is set forth here and they approve it at the next meeting, hopefully this will be the more or less. Complete renovation of the nuisance ordinances, at least the ones that, that have been found to this point.
Well, I'm sure hoping it works out for us, and I think it will.
But we've always had problems with this section.
Yes.
When it came to enforcement part.
Right.
We always had to go in court, and it was always a pain.
Mm-hmm.
So this is actually a great start.
Yes, appreciate your hard work on it too.
Well, I, I can't take credit. Chief Toso and Spencer Palmerson made, who's not here, but this whole nuisance, it's, it's been a team effort, so.
So.
So again, it's just the first reading, you don't have to take action at this time, if you have any other questions.
Are there any questions of the commission? Attorney? Why, thank you for all the work on that, and we're looking forward to improving that for the next meetings. Okay, citizen comment, we have nothing? Nothing under informational items. Motion to pay the list of bills as submitted.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the list of bills as submitted.
Commissioner Knosky. Commissioner Eulencamp. Any further discussion? If none, roll call.
Commissioner Knosky.
Aye.
Commissioner Hatch.
Aye.
Mr. Eulencamp.
Aye.
President.
Aye, motion carried. Nothing else before the commission, meeting adjourned. All right, seven thirty AM.